7:00 PM, we'll call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Malky.
Here.
Treasurer Rogers.
Here.
Trustee Lannan.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Lay.
Here.
Trustee Thering.
Here.
And Clerk Cody here. Everybody's here.
Awesome. I like it. Sorry I missed the last meeting, but it was a good choice because I was feeling bad on Wednesday and then for two weeks later, I was still feeling pretty bad. So forgive my voice tonight a little bit if it crackles. We have an agenda in front of us. I'm happy to entertain any motions regarding the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda?
I'd like to, if I could, I'd like to make a motion on the agenda.
What?
We have the motion on the floor already, though.
Okay.
Motion to approve it with.
So do we have support for this? This motion's already started. Do we have support for the motion to approve the agenda?
Did you want to?
No support.
Seeing none. Did you have a motion?
I did. I did have a motion. I would like to propose a motion to add to new bud business, item E. We just received a resignation letter from Trustee Brown. So new business E, discussion on the resignation of Trustee Jeff Brown.
Support.
We have motion and support. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of approving the agenda with the one additional item, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to presentations and public hearings of which we have neither. So public comment, which is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:02 PM.
There's nobody online.
Let the record show, nobody's connected remotely. I see no one in the galleries raising their hands or coming forward. Hearing the door not opening. We'll close public comment at 7:02 PM. Report boards and comments, current list of boards and commissions. I see we have a few applications beginning to trickle in. Unless there are objections, my thoughts were that we begin to maybe do appointments in December because I would expect more applications, I hope more applications are coming in for the various spots that terminate at the end of this year. Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Board member reports. Trustee Thering.
Nothing to report.
Clerk Cody.
Nothing.
Trustee Brown.
I did not make the Mount Pleasant City Commission meeting, but I would just like to point out that I did watch some of it from the location that I was at. And the only thing I want to mention is that it was a proud moment to watch Eli get, Terrorist Son Eli get sworn into the Mount Pleasant Fire Department full-time. It just, it just, it tingled. Being a firefighter myself back in the days to see that young man standing up there so proud with his right hand raised. Congratulations, Mom. And congratulations to Eli. I just wanted to report on that. That was awesome.
That's great news. Trustee Lannan?
Sure. I had a couple meetings I attended today. I attended the Isabella County Finance Committee and Committee of Pool meeting. Things that went on there. Today they're considering moving forward to appoint a deputy medical examiner. There were also four opiate advisory committee positions that are opened. And there's been some recommendations of folks for those. And each of those four person they're looking to select has some specific or unique tie to the opioids. For instance, maybe you were an opioid addicted person yourself or lived with one. That would be like one category. Medical assistance in that area was another group. So they're slightly different, the four appointments. They're going to be considering approving grant contracts for fiscal year '26 for both the adult drug court as well as the juvenile drug court. One thing that got significant discussion was talking about possibly going into a contract with a service that houses, maintains, handles the lifespan of their documents and records. Municipalities have a very high level expected of them for maintaining and keeping the records and being able to access them for the public when requested. So that's something they're looking into. And something that I found out to be somewhat interesting to me came up in discussion there is that the county actually has a drinking water system in a neighborhood area out at Lake Isabella. There was some discussion in regards to that. So that pretty much summed up the county meeting today, if there's any questions.
I assume the discussion on the drinking water at Lake Isabella is if the village becomes a city, as they're looking at doing, then the county doesn't have to maintain that water system anymore.
So the discussion was, that may be a future vision.
Okay.
Not anything about won't have to, but maybe look at turning it over if anyone was interested. The discussion was actually on delinquent collection of past due fees. You got a lot of folks out there that may not necessarily live on that piece of property. And so they pay, have no usage, and might not be thinking about it. Other folks may just want it to be rolled onto their tax roll as a convenience for them. Couple of thoughts there. There was discussion that maybe if the village would be interested, might be interested.
Yeah. My impression, the county would be happy to not have to have that. Yeah. But I'm speculating, so maybe I shouldn't do that.
Secondly, I attended a couple day retreat, October 29th and 30th in Frankenmuth. You know how they were having retreats for the various physicians, treasurers, supervisors, trustees. Well, I chose to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission Retreat. I thought that was an area that I'd really like to learn a little bit more about, get freshened up a little bit. But some of the things we talked about was zoning teamwork and transparent public process, you know, when you're doing zoning things. Don't do it in the silo. Get some great input from your citizens, people of effect. Talked about master plan development and review. That includes public engagement. There was talk on smart growth and defensible zoning decisions. You know, do things with a purpose, have good backup. Some of the zoning topics that were focused on a little bit were short-term rentals and large-scale renewable energy areas. Also, there's discussion regarding land use and special land use and the compatibility of it with adjacent land uses and natural environment. One that stuck out was, think about, does your utilities have the capacity to service a special use, you know? Or is it going to be wanting to consume more whatever service you're providing than you have capability to serve? So got a lot of great discussion out of that. Appreciated the opportunity to attend it.
All those things you just listed are things that come before us all the time in the planning commission.
Thanks.
Those are good. Trustee Lay?
I've got nothing right now.
Treasurer Rogers?
Nothing to report.
And I don't, I think we reported on the EDA last time when you were here. So I'm not going to report on that. So moving on, consent agenda. I'll just note, well, number 12, the easement for the township property on Deerfield and is it old 27, Old Mission, I guess. Just note that that's on there and that you've all seen that. But happy to entertain motions?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Rogers to approve the consent agenda discussion. Warrants?
Yes, all good.
All good?
Excellent.
All in favor of the motion to approve consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to new business, item A, Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, Grant Division A, Peerless Midwest Change Order Number One. Mr. Stuldryer?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We're looking for the board to consider approving change order number one with Peerless Midwest. And this is related to the, our Eagle Drinking Water Grant, the 10.9 million or so ARPA grant. This is related to Division A, which is the water supply. And what it basically involves is we did the test well and all the things that are associated with that to lead up to an application to Eagle to get that permitted. And we've done all that. We've received the permit. So now we're moving from, I'll say a test well, moving that into production. And we don't do that at the front end with the original bids because we're not sure of Eagle permitting at that point and all that. So this change order is in the amount of $71,458.80. And be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll make a motion. No one has any questions? Make a motion, approve, approval of the change order number one with Peerless Midwest for the Eagle Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF, ARPA, Grant Division A, Water Supply. Well Development Project in the amount of $71,458.80.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Lannan. Questions, discussion?
Just want to verify this. This will increase the water supply for the township, if correct. So any idea percentage wise, how much it does?
We were permitted for 400 gallons per minute. There's no restrictions on the amount of time we can run.
And what percentage would that be of our current capacity above and beyond our current?
Well, we currently have seven other wells, all, six of which are at 400 gallons per minute and another that's at seven.
Yeah, that answers it. Real good.
This is awesome, Kim. Nice job. This is great.
Yeah, I'm glad just been involved in being a part of this for sure. This is nice.
Well, you know, being in a community that can provide truly fresh water and enough of it, that makes all the difference of where somebody lives. I mean, if you don't have good water, you're not going to hang around too long.
Yeah, people buy for that location. People come here just for this.
I think it's important to note that this is not additional cost. This is using more of the grant money already granted to us.
Exactly. Which even makes it better, right?
Yeah. And related to that, I'll point out, I had a question earlier on this that I asked our manager. So I'll lift it up here. On page 43, it shows a available balance left on that grant, on the grant monies of 709,000 and some change. And it, the footnote there says that this is, assumes approval of this change order, that would be the balance. But it's in reality, unless I state this wrong, you can correct me, manager, that's actually if change order one, three, and four were all approved, that would be the balance.
And all prior change?
Change orders, yes, right. That were approved, correct. Any other discussion? Anybody not clear in the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item B of new business, similar item, this one being change order number three and four, excuse me. The difference being that it's a different portion of how we broke up the work to be done. Mr. Stuldryer, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you. There's a report that begins on page 47 of your agenda packet, looking for consideration to approve change orders number three and four with J.R. Heinemann. And again, it's related to the 10.9-ish project. This is related to Division C, as in CAT, in the amount of $85,190.55. And there's kind of two pieces to this, if you will. One has to do with well number 12, which is the new well, the well house, doing some additional work and improvements on that. And then the other piece is related to the treatment plant. As part of that project, there's a new building going on. I shouldn't call it a pole barn, but that's sort of what it looks like. And that was part of the original plan. And what we're doing here is we're essentially making it, the way I look at it, is more of a four-season functional workspace, putting insulation on the interior walls, finishing the interior walls, so it can provide us more flexibility in operations. And again, as the supervisor pointed out, with, if this is approved, we will still have $709,000 left of the grant funds. And as I've said before, we're within the confines of the project plan definition. Trying to spend as much money as that as we can, so we don't have to return it. We will be returning some of the money. It's a little early to guess how much, but that's okay, too. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
I can keep this rolling if you want.
Okay.
All right. Make a motion to approve of change order number three and number four with J.R. Heinemann for the Eagle Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF, ARPA Grant, Division C Water Treatment Plan Expansion Project in the amount of $85,190.55.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Lannan. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none. Anybody not clear in the motion? All in favor of the motion to approve change order number three and four, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item C on our new business, Consider Renewal of the Township Manager Employment Agreement for 2026. This is tabled, I believe, from the prior meeting. So I appreciate the board tabling that so that all seven of us were here to have this discussion. Mr. Stuldryer, is there something you want to introduce on this?
Thank you. I will just point out that there is some information, beginning on page 55 of your agenda packet, included the existing contract between the township and myself. And then also included the results of the board level performance review that y'all conducted a few months ago. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I vote that we renew manager's Stuldryer's employment agreement. The current cost of living index is 3%. I move that we use that 3% to his current wages going forward.
Support.
We have a motion by Rogers, support by Cody. Discussions? I'll add that I think that's reasonable motion, but we, there are other compensations that, for all staff for that matter, but our manager actually has a vehicle allowance because he doesn't drive one of the township vehicles and put on, or drive his own and do mileage, right? So we have given him an allowance in the past. I would like to see us increase that a little bit, too, like $50 a month, just to cover, again, cost of living increases. Costs of vehicles are not getting cheaper.
Can I move to agenda?
How did we come up with 3%?
That's current CPI.
Okay. I feel we should do more than that.
Okay.
I feel it should be 6%. And the car allowance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The cost of living, it says, when you Google, it's 2.5. I think 3 is good. If you want to do the 50 extra, too, that's fine.
That's reasonable.
That seems good.
Other thoughts, comments? Love to hear from the other trustees on this.
How's he fit, how's he doing on vacation time?
That's the one thing in the past that we've, one way we were able to compensate him without going crazy with salary was to provide additional vacation time. I believe you're currently sitting at six weeks. My impression from that, I'll certainly let you jump in here if you'd like, is that seems adequate to you, that if it were more, you might have some difficulty with that?
Well, this might be a good time. Let me just make sure we have a motion.
We do.
And support. And the motion that's been supported is for a 3% pay increase.
Correct.
Out of the base salary. Okay. So we might as well use that as a starting point for the negotiation. And if I were to be offered a 3% wage increase and a $50 a month increase in my car allowance, I would accept that offer. That changes your motion, maybe, but.
Motion's there so we can discuss.
Yeah. We're not negotiating until we've got a motion.
Right.
Supported, so.
Would you speak to the vacation, since I brought that up?
I'm happy with the vacation.
Should I amend my motion?
Let's hear whatever he has to say.
Well, you know what I have to say?
Okay.
I will always, I believe we have the best manager in the state. I work with quite a few managers. And the reason why I put 6% out there, because that's what he's worth. He's accepted 3, that's fine. That's fine. I'm good with that. I can, if the manager's accepting that, wants to negotiate no further, I'd be crazy to negotiate against myself, right? But just putting it out there, I believe I said the 6% because I believe that's exactly what you're worth. And you're worth more because of what you do. That's all I have to say.
I would appreciate if you were so inclined in amended motion to the 3% and the $50 car allowance. I would be in support of that if you so decide.
I so amend my motion to 3% salary increase and $50 a month increase to car allowance.
And you're accepting that?
Support.
Okay. I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, you were. Yes, thank you. All right, you're accepting that then?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody caught that change?
Yeah.
So I won't, I appreciate your sentiment. I don't disagree. Met with the manager on Monday for our management team meeting. And I told him similarly, I said, I think we have the best. I said the county, but that's because I was thinking small. So I appreciate your comment about.
I work across, I work across the state, so.
But obviously, this board gave our manager high marks. But obviously, this board gave our, our manager high marks. And I think they're well-deserved high marks.
For sure.
But I am supportive of the motion as it stands. Other comments?
I think it's a good motion. I think the offer, counteroffer from the managers, very appropriate, but certainly isn't overwhelming. It's underwhelming a little bit. But I think it's fairly appropriate.
It's really hard to assign a number to somebody who does so much.
So well.
Agreed. Other thoughts?
I just wanted to say, I've never, some of you have been through this several times with me. And the last thing I ever want to do is create a contention amongst the board members about, you know, what's appropriate and so forth. I do very much like, and I've used stronger words in the past, working for the citizens of Union Township, this board, and all the other boards. And I have been saying that for years. I continue to believe it. I appreciate trustee Brown and Lanin's comments about, you know, maybe it's worth a little bit more, but I'm very satisfied and happy if the board is inclined for a three percent pay increase and a increase of fifty dollars on the car allowance that currently is at three fifty, I think. So that would take it to four. So, thank you.
Trustee Lanin?
Before we vote on this, I would like to talk about the document a little bit, the, the agreement.
The agreement? Sure.
That's written, now, just for my clarification. Not really looking at it with anybody's name on it. This is just our agreement here. But looking on page three, under vacation, sick, and personal leave. Is this how I'm to interpret this? So the manager starts a new year, January first. And on January first, they'll be credited automatically two hundred and forty hours of vacation leave, twenty-four hours personal leave, eighty hours sick leave, twenty-four hours personal leave, and two hundred and forty hours of vacation leave on an annual basis each January first. But then also say that the manager was pretty prudent in the use of his previous sick time and vacation time. On top of that, you could roll over two hundred and eighty hours of vacation and four hundred and eighty hours of sick time. If you guys are tracking with me at all.
Yeah.
So, taking calculation of current wages versus divided by twenty forty, two thousand and forty hours, which is a typical year's work. So if the manager left on the second of the year, then we'd be on the hook. I calculate for about eighty-three thousand dollars. Am I interpreting that paragraph correctly? And while you're thinking about that, then going on to item two, A and B. There's certainly a typo in here, but just help me understand really what the difference between A and B is. I'll read it. Except as otherwise provided in this agreement, in the event the manager's employment is terminated, either voluntarily or involuntarily, the manager shall be compensated for all accrued unused vacation and personal leave. So that's A. B. Except as otherwise provided in the agreement, in the event the manager's employment is terminated, either voluntarily or involuntarily, without cause, the manager shall be compensated, here's the typo part. It won't be on half, I think you're trying to say, one, one half of accrued unused sick leave. So I guess I'm kind of picking it out. One says vacation and personal. One says accrued unused sick leave. So I guess there is quite a difference in those two paragraphs. But just help me, I, you know, I just want to make sure I really understand what this agreement says.
Need some clarification?
Well, the, the one, as I read it, I, I thought we had added for the without cause kind of thing. So if new board were to be elected in and immediately fire the manager for no cause, just because they want to change things up, I, I believe we added this for that particular situation. But to your other questions, I'm still processing.
So involuntarily and involuntarily without cause. I guess I'm not really clear what that means.
Yeah, I, I had the same thought. It almost seems like that it would be involuntarily without cause, right?
That's a very specific clause.
Yeah, it, it certainly means so. But I just was hoping, so I'm just pointing that out. I don't, I don't really quite understand it. Maybe if we could get some clarification. And I'm sure maybe the, Mr. Stuldryer could help us out with that. But then continuing on, I, if you go to page five and you read item four, I just wanted to check this paragraph against what we just read on page three about vacation and sick leave. So it says, should the township terminate the manager's employment without cause prior to the completion of the contract term? They shall be entitled to a severance payment equal to one and a half months of pay and benefits for each year worked up to a maximum of twelve months of their then-current rate of pay and benefits, and shall be entitled to receive accrued unused vacation, personal, and one-half sick leave.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Bank balances at his, at their then-current rate of pay.
It's kind of duplicates that other section or conflicts potentially.
I, I'm just wondering if there, is there a conflict there? Or is that mirror?
I don't think there's a, like, from what I'm reading, I don't think there's a conflict there. I think it's saying that there would be severance, and in addition to the severance, all of the things that are talked about in the previous section would come into play. That's how I'm reading it.
Number four references without cause, not voluntary or involuntary. Again, so if a new board is elected, like the supervisor said, and they want to just change things up and release the manager's duties, that's without cause. So this is just, this is a severance.
As long as we're bringing this up, too, this is related somewhat. Doesn't clarify your questions. We did extend the severance for directors. I think we ought to compensate manager position to be in kind. And I'm trying to remember if that was two or three months that we extended that to. It seems like that'll be replicated, because it's for the without cause situation.
I, I really, we should add the without cause to section two A on page three, because it's lacking without cause. It just says involuntarily. I, I think if that's the way that it's written throughout the document, there should be that consistency. Or maybe I'm.
And that's where I was wondering if that one and a half severance of one and a half months of pay shall be entitled to severance payments equal to one point five months of pay and benefits for each year they work. So say you work ten years. You're talking fifteen. Months of pay. Up to a maximum of twelve months, but, so, maxes out at twelve. So without really, you know, checking this means this and this means this, I just wanted to make sure that it is very clear if it would be brought before, you know, say, in court. Are we saying the same thing, or would there be a conflict in those two paragraphs?
Yeah, and I, and I don't, trustee Lee Lay, I'm not sure I understand your comment about A, because the read, the, the way I interpret A differently than B on, this is on vacation, sick, personal leave, too, is it's fairly typical that if you're working somewhere, any accrued vacation you get compensated for regardless of why you leave, because you walked away, or you're terminated, or for cause or no cause.
That's new to me, because in Texas, that was not the case all the time.
Really?
Yes.
That's Texas.
Yes.
This is Michigan.
Yeah, I know.
Texas is way different than all states.
So I'm just saying, that's.
My, my point is, I'm comfortable with A being there.
I just think it's really interesting that it's not in all of the sections.
Right. And that's because I guess I always viewed it as vacation is accrued and earned, and it's a compensatable item, even if you're terminated or, or you leave.
The way it's laid out, though, it's earned on a, it's not even prorated. You make it one day into the year. You just hooked a whole year's worth of.
Yeah, and it talks about, the, the word accrued is used in other places in here, even though it says on January first, you, you're going to bank this, right? But it, but it also refers to accrued vacation time, which implies the reverse of that, that you accrue it through the year versus getting all in one lump sum. That's what you're referring to, correct? You don't have to jump in, but if you.
No, I, I'm saying that it'd be a lump sum.
Correct. But I'm, but I'm saying it does use the word accrued. It talks about accrued, um, this was in.
The second sentence.
It's accrued. If you make it to the first day of the year, you just accrued it.
Right, but that implies to me, accrued implies to me, how I'm used to seeing it, which is, if you've worked three months, you've earned three months' worth of, a quarter of the year's worth of vacation time.
But on day one, when you're hired, you don't have anything. A year later, on January one, you have accrued from the previous year's employment.
Okay, if that's what it means, it's just not clear to me in this document, at least at this point. Maybe if we sat down and asked.
That is what it.
But the, the sentence, then, under vacation, sick number one, we should have the word accrued in that first sentence, right?
Where?
Well, it, it says, the manager shall be credited with two hundred and forty vacation leave hours and twenty-four hours of personal leave accrued. Because it does, as I read it, as of January one, it's. Is that our, is that our intent? Or is our intent that it's accrued?
It appears that that's the intent, because item one says vacation shall be credited, sick time shall be accrued.
You could also read it as he could use this, but that doesn't mean he has it yet, because it's credited.
So bringing up this conversation, I think it's something for us to talk about and get clarified. But at the least, I wanted to clarify and correct that typo that says on half.
Well, I mean, you can only roll over so many. So if you're like, you can't like build it up and like quit for three years or work for it, because you could only roll over so many, so I'm assuming that's why that's there.
Can we fine, fine tune this and, and clarify and solidify it at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Because it doesn't take, it doesn't take effect until January one. Is that okay or no? I mean, does.
That is okay. Would you like to comment on some of this? Because it, you don't have to, but.
Yeah, I know. I, so it probably is not the best written, because there's confusion. The parts you're talking about have been in this contract for, probably since the beginning. I will point out that six weeks of vacation gets loaded into my bank January one, period. This, the, it's not related to an accrual thing. So that's some language that could be cleaned up. When it comes to sections two A and B, there is the piece about except as otherwise provided in this agreement. this two A and B, I'm pretty certain was kind of original language. In the last, maybe two years ago, two contracts ago, we added the section under termination, number four. And at the time we did that, we might not have cleaned up language that was sort of similar that you see in two A and B at the top. but I think it does need to be cleaned up a little bit. how we go about doing that, you want to get the attorneys involved. You can either let me try to clean it up for final approval at the next meeting. Or you might want somebody else.
From, from my point of view, if you're willing, I'd love for you to take a shot at it for us to look at and review. That's just my opinion.
I, I think you've heard.
Or we could say, have the management team collectively go through it together. last resort, if you feel like spending money, bring in the attorney. But I, I, I only bring this up for the good of the township and trying to foresee any conflicts that could possibly happen with someone down the road.
Confusion's not good, right?
I've had some really bad teacher contracts in my past, so, yeah.
What's that?
I said, I've had some really bad contracts in my past, so I'm like, clarity is important.
Yeah. I know, I, I appreciate your comments, Tim, because I agree that some clarification would be helpful. My assumption is largely the things we were talking about can be done once we have a tentative agreement with manager on employment. That, that these are not showstoppers unless we were really to change something dramatic, right?
I, I think we have the spirit.
Yes, the intent is there. But I would, I would like to go back to that termination, section four, make the severance payment equivalent to what we offered the directors. I think it should be consistent.
I think that's fair.
It's not. It's not currently, and it's not going to be.
Yeah. I, I don't know why the.
You don't want that.
There was a reason for it, but I don't remember what it was.
Item four, severance calculation, the maximum of twelve months. That's what was negotiated between the board and myself.
Oh, yes.
The board is a separate matter.
I didn't.
Approved a.
Yes.
Directors, department directors employment agreement at my initiative, that contains similar severance, but it's not as rich, if you will, as this language.
I see that now, I read the rest of the paragraph. So, I, I retract my statement. That, that's why the initial one and a half is in there, and it's less than our directors being offered, because there's additional stuff.
Are we gonna table this until next meeting, or?
No, I, I think, I think we have a potential offer to our manager. We have not taken a motion or a vote on that. I think that's far enough along in principle that we could make that formal offer for our manager. If he accepts, then we've come to a, uh, working agreement with some details to iron out via the contract. Is it reasonable to you if we were to pass the motion?
Yeah, because right now, it's, it's about negotiation. And we've identified, and we've negotiated, I think, and maybe we haven't voted yet, but, and we've done that part. Uh, we also take this opportunity to clean up language and other things in there. So, I think the, and I know it says consider renewal, but on the November, on the second meeting in November agenda, there'll be a action item to approve the manager's employment agreement for 2026. So, from that perspective, I think you'd be motioning and approving, I'll say, the economic terms of the agreement. And if we have those nailed down, then I'll go back and update the document to reflect that. And with the help of the management team and the attorney, clean up some of this other non-economic language so that the version that comes to you in the second week of November would contain the new economic term, it'd have a new salary amount, it'd have a new vehicle allowance amount, and then there'd be some probably redlined and struck out as it relates to the vacation sick personal section, A and B, vis a vis the termination section, items two, three, and four.
Good.
So, we have a motion on the floor, and I'm just gonna clarify for myself and others. It was a three percent salary increase plus a fifty dollar increase to the vehicle allowance.
Month, yeah, you should probably write monthly vehicle allowance, right?
Fair, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that was intent.
Yeah, I was just saying.
It's good clarification. Uh, yeah, thank you. So, other discussion on that item?
So, with that, there's probably some other things that happen, like there will be an increased cost to the township for, uh, the retirement compensation that.
Health insurance, all, all that, yeah.
Because that's just a percentage, and so, um, which is great and fine, but just be aware.
Yeah, so, as I understand it, just, it's implied but not said, that all the other benefits that have been agreed to in the past are carried over. The only change is now being the salary increase and the vehicle compensation increase.
Sounds like the motion.
Any other discussion? Would you do a real call of the board for this, please, clerk Cody?
Supervisor Milky.
Yes.
Treasurer Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Lannan.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Lay.
Yes.
Trustee Th- Harry.
Clerk Cody, yes.
Thank you very much.
Passed unanimously, you now have a formal offer with some, just to clean up on detailed stuff.
Right, and if it wasn't clear before, I accept that offer.
Thank you. I, uh, very much appreciate you sitting here next to me and glad you're willing to stay there for a bit.
Love the work, love the location, love the place.
And you got a great board and all.
Hey, get rid of the bad ones.
Uh, that, that takes me to item D on our agenda adoption, fiscal year 2026 budget. Uh, obviously, we have a little bit more time, we have until December legally, end of the year, to get this done. Uh, but we've had ample opportunity to kind of go through it, ask questions. If this board is ready, we can move ahead, or if you choose not to, we can continue to talk about this. Um, but on our agenda is, uh, the idea that we may be ready. So, I'll leave it up to this board at this point. Mr. Stuldr, do you have anything to introduce on this?
Yes, just briefly. Page seventy-one begins a report on this.
What page, I'm sorry?
Seventy-one of the agenda packet. And what, what, what you're doing tonight would be approving an appropriation resolution covering the general fund, the fire, special assessment, east DDA, west DDA, two percent fund, and then the sewer and water funds. You're approving those at the departmental level as reflected in the report that be, begins on page seventy-four, lists your revenues, and then all the departments within each fund, and then there's, each fund is separated. And I point that piece out because you've been looking at a detailed budget level, and this is now rolled up, and you're approving it at a departmental level, um, as opposed to a, a line item level. The appropriation resolution also says that you will be approving the fee schedule that's in this document. And there were only minor changes to it from last year in the recommended budget. And you're also approving the millage rates. No change in either the millage rates, operating or fire. Minor changes in the fee related to some water and sewer items. But then more materially, the change, there's been a change from the recommended budget to tonight. And that is, and I'm recommending the budget be adopted with this change. You may recall discussion, the EDA, when they approved and recommended to the board of trustees their budget. They adopted their budget without two hundred and forty thousand dollars in that budget to, that was gonna be used to help pay for the Jameson Park Fitness Court. They removed that two forty. And so, this budget compared to the recommended does not have the two forty from the EDA budget in it. And then as part of the discussion, we've now added, part of the board, this, this board's discussion, we have added two hundred and forty, that same two hundred and forty thousand, to the general fund budget. That part was not in the original recommended budget. Related to the fitness court, but separate from EDA two forty action. The original recommended budget did not contain sixty thousand dollars that was the general fund's original cost share plan when we were assuming two forty from the.
Right.
So, those are the three parts that are highlighted and spoken to on page seventy-one. Taken together is adding three hundred thousand dollars to the general fund to support the fitness court at Jameson Park. And we continue to, and, and we did that so that we could move along and accept the grant, the sixty thousand dollar grant. And at the time, I also stated that we have a two percent grant, a two percent request in that would reduce our three hundred thousand if awarded. And we are also not done yet. We're, we're gonna initiate some additional conversations with the EDA to revisit this issue in part or in whole. If I wanna point that out. Other than that, no changes to the original recommended budget.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just add that, since I sit on the EDA, um, it was an interesting discussion. It was, I thought, useful discussion regarding the fitness court. And I think a lot of the hangup was, I'll do my best to speak for the board broadly. A lot of the hangups seemed to be that we didn't have a specific parks plan that identified all future development that might happen in the park, to say this is exactly the best spot for it. Because if the plan set it, it seemed to me as though they were much more in favor of it. And there was several on the board that were in full support of the, the concept in general. But anyways, they unanimously voted this out because of the discussion that occurred. And I think our manager is correct that, uh, if we need some additional help, they might be open to the discussion. Probably not the two forty. That's my impression, and I can't speak for the EDA on that, other than that's kind of what I heard.
And a lot of this discussion about the two forty, the fitness court, and all that jazz, this is not new. This was all discussed at the meeting, a couple meetings ago, when we were considering accepting the sixty thousand dollar grant. It was communicated what the EDA had done. We talked about not wanting to, you know, get sideways unnecessarily with the EDA. And so, that discussion then flowed into the budget that's in front of you tonight with these points in writing that we talked about. I'm good, everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion. So, I made the motion for, and I'll just put this out there real quick. If it was to, we were on hook for three hundred thousand dollars, it's worth it. Plain and simple. Consider, I'll make a motion to a, a, adoption of the FY two, two thousand twenty-six appropriation resolution covering the following funds, general, fire, special assessment, east DDA, west DDA, two percent grant, sewer and water, and approval of the two thousand twenty-six fee schedule and millage rates.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Cody. Additional discussion? Trustee Lannan.
Yeah, thanks. Again, kind of for clarification for myself. If you happen to turn to page seventy-four, that would be under the general fund under, uh, revenues, I wanna say. Anyways, under the number one zero one zero 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 six seven four, says private contributions and donations. Our activity in twenty twenty-five. Just curious about that.
The airport thing, or no?
I'd have to, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Uh, page seventy-five.
And just for clarification for public too, that what, what you're referring to is a twenty twenty-five activity and is not in the twenty twenty-six budget?
Correct. Item nine oh one, which again is general fund, capital outlay. So, it has a series of numbers for the years twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six under recommended budget, which has no number. Just curious as about, as to that.
I'm sorry, could you point where you're referring to again for me?
Page seventy-five.
Mm-hmm.
Cal, line item on the column nine oh, nine oh one.
Yep.
Second to the bottom, capital outlay. There's numbers populated all the way across until you get into recommended budget for twenty-six. So, just trying to learn a little bit about capital outlay and the lack of a number there.
And so, when we're developing a budget and recommending a budget, what we do operationally in the department is we request monies within our department. My department is one seventy-two number. And then normally when, and, and there's some activity, and it's not consistent, where in the past, the finance office would say, some of this is really capital. It belongs in this nine oh one department. And we've probably not brought that forward, that, that separation as, as well as we could. I could imagine a, a budget amendment that would take some of these larger expenses like the two forty in the Parks Department for the fitness center, maybe moving down to that. But I'm not an accountant, so I didn't know exactly where, when, and how, and which ones, so.
Okay. So, I just anticipate there will be some number in there as we go through the year twenty twenty-six. Not known, just guessing. Then going over to page ninety.
Can I stop real quick?
Sure.
Just to follow up on the capital outlay, is it that the finance department typically wants to separate that because of how you treat it as an asset on the books, essentially? Yeah. Thank you. Go ahead, trustee Lannan.
Okay, actually, page ninety-three. Getting into the, uh, fees. So, I don't have a calculator handy, but I think I did a calculation, if I remember. Looking underwater and sewer, uh, first item, water service quarterly rate. So, if I do a calculation simply on the minimum quarterly rate in the, uh, gallons of water presented there, are we looking at like about four point seven cents a gallon? Does anybody know? How much is my water per gallon?
You referring to the seventy dollar minimum, then?
Yeah.
The fifteen, yeah, I get it.
Seventy dollars and thirty-five cent minimum, up to fifteen hundred gallons, so say you use, or fifteen thousand gallons. And either my math or my calculator could be off, but if I recall, it seemed like it came out to about four point six nine cents per gallon.
I actually have less than a half a cent per gallon.
You're one zero off.
Okay.
So, yeah. Point four seven penny per gallon.
Okay, I like that.
So a penny for, roughly a penny for every two gallons.
Yes, okay.
Roughly.
That sounds good in just listening to conversation with large draw operations. Like water plant places or say beer manufacturers, what they're paying for water. Versus, so that half cent sounds good.
Incidentally, so we have that minimum and a large part of that goes to paying into the infrastructure itself, right, the Enterprise Fund to help make it sustainable. Once you get past that, it's, you get roughly four gallons for a penny.
Right.
After that.
The more you use, the less it becomes.
And the, I'm assuming the idea.
Infrastructure is what you pay for.
Yes, I would assume that's the thought process.
And then my last statement, I guess, same page ninety-three, getting under the other requests and the facility rentals. I'm thinking just for consistency, three of those say per day. Three of them do not say per day, like for instance, Jamison Hall, a hundred and fifty dollars for a resident, three hundred for a non-resident. Is that for a day? Is that for eight hours? Is that for?
As a day, how do they define the day in here?
Ten AM to eleven PM.
Ten AM to eleven PM.
Okay, so my thought was looking under McDonald Park Pavilion. Seventy dollars per day, ninety-five dollars per day. Jamison Park Pavilion, fifty per day, and then seventy-five dollars. Then Jamison Hall, one fifty, a hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred. It doesn't list per day on three of them and it listed on three of them, so. And your suggestion for consistency and clarification, we might add something there.
Yeah, I'll be clear in what goes out to the resident.
Thank you.
Thank you. So other, did you know something about the twenty thou?
It's the check that we received the other day. I can't remember exactly what it's for, but that's where we booked it too, because it was from another unit. I don't want to say another unit of government. It wasn't a state revenue. So we booked it there, which we have used that account in the past. It's just we haven't had any activity. I don't know if it was something they were planning to get, but I can pull it up. I don't know if you want me to do that real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Please. So we'll get an answer for that to you. That's related to twenty-five. It only takes a second. The other items were more information that doesn't change.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that.
Yep.
Other than the fee schedule clarification on per date or consistency, I guess. So the motion on the floor. Remind me, you moved it?
Yes.
Who supported it?
Lisa.
Cody.
Um, other discussion, questions? You okay moving on without getting the answer till after?
I am.
Because it's related to last year.
Correct.
All right, any objections to roll call on this?
No.
Clerk Cody, anybody not understand the motion? We're talking fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget approval?
Yep.
Clerk Cody?
Trustee Thering.
Yes.
Trustee Lay.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Lannon.
Yes.
Treasurer Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Monkey.
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, we'll move on if you're okay for, we'll finish our next item and then hopefully maybe have an answer.
Yeah, what a difference that decimal position.
I would like to add, just as a note, before we do move to the next business item, uh, thank you to the entire staff that's involved in putting the budget together. I know it's a lot of work every year. But it's greatly appreciated.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. I failed to do that a minute ago, but it's been a busy six months or so in the organization, particularly the finance operation. Yes, we have some support. We're trying to keep those dollars, you know, trying to manage those prudently, which is put a an extraordinary, I'd say, burden on Hannah. And so I really want to, in addition to the entire organization that helps develop these budgets. Hannah's work on this and all things related finance has been outstanding and very helpful and has allowed us to keep the dollars spent on the consultant as low as possible.
Thank you.
A bunch of thank yous.
And I'm going to come back to you after next business item for the answer.
Okay.
All right, um, but I want to get, get to this now. We added an item on our agenda based on a letter that we all had at our desks. Trustee Brown, would you like to introduce this?
Sure. Well, I can just start off, but I'll just read the letter and this is, I guess it'll be to the community too, plus the trustees and staff. Please accept this letter as my formal notice of my resignation from my position as Union Township trustee. With an effective date to be determined. The determined would be the closing of my home and address no longer in Union Township. My decision to step down is due to a change in employment, which necessitates a move to Traverse City, Michigan. It has been a genuine privilege to serve the community as trustee for the last five years and to contribute to, to our community, communities development. I feel very grateful for this experience and the opportunity to work alongside such dedicated individuals, every single one of you, plus the past board, which includes quite a few of you. I'm confident that this board will continue to provide a great service to the community, and I sincerely wish the board ongoing success. With that being said, I'll push the letter aside and get just a bit more personal. This is truly, truly one of the things I'll miss when I leave here in the next couple of weeks. I have literally enjoyed myself very much working with Kim, Mark, the full staff, Rodney, everybody on, on the board. Union Township trusted, trustee employees are the best I've ever met. The most dedicated, loyal, just willing to go out of their way. I go to a water, buy a water break. Did I ever stop? Hey, I, I didn't want to get involved in the work. But two o'clock in the morning, they're out there with smiles, happy. The community's bringing them coffees and donuts, like they want to pitch in. I don't know if I'll ever live in a community like Union Township ever again. I hope I do. I really do. I pray that I do. I just want to thank everyone, this community, Union Township in a whole, thank you, thank you. I've really, really enjoyed the experience and I've learned so much from each and every one of you. Every one of you. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thanks. Well, um, you'll certainly be missed and learn a lot from you, and I appreciate all that you've done too, so.
Thank you.
Do you want me to make a motion to accept it?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept Trustee Brown's letter of resignation. Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Rogers.
Even though I don't want to.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of accepting Trustee Brown's resignation date to be determined, but not too dark, far distant future, I'm hearing.
It'll be real close.
Say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. You know, Trustee Thering and I talked about not accepting it.
He just said he was going to do it. You better not do that.
Right, right.
It's a pretty nice place you're going to, though.
Yeah. So I've had a conversation with Trustee Brown and a lot of it comes down to how long he has his home as where he's living for the moment. But the time is short, and so I think it's safe to say before the end of the year.
End of the month.
So I wanted the opportunity, some of you have been through this before, where you've had to replace a board member. And so my hope was to have a brief discussion of how we want to handle it. Because what's required from the state is pretty simple. But we have a lot of latitude in how we choose to deal with this. And we can share what's been done in the past, but that doesn't mean we're stuck to that.
Can I look it up and stuff before we talk about it? Just to make sure everything's.
I'm schooled on this right now, but you can look it up after. So. I, I didn't want to, I, I've known for a little while, but I didn't feel it was my place to say. And Trustee Brown shared it with me so that the township, we could prepare for this. And so Manager Stuldryer's been in the loop because I've asked him to do exactly which you wanted to look up. Get out the files from the past, make sure that what the laws are chang, if they've changed or not. And it seems to me they have a little bit. But in any event, what we need to do is there will be an effective date of Trustee Brown where he's no longer a trustee. That begins a clock, and that clock is forty-five days we have to do an appointment. The only difficulty there is the holidays because we have a lighter calendar for meetings typically. But essentially, we have forty-five days to do an appointment. If we do not, Mr. Stuldryer, please jump in if I misspeak. If we do not, then the county clerk calls a special election, which is different than it was, I think, in the past. Because I think in the past, it was County Board of Commissioners that would do an appointment, because we didn't. But I'm assuming what's.
It doesn't sound right.
It doesn't? Okay, my memory could be wrong on it. In any event, the law now?
They, they could appoint them, like they would have to. They would pick somebody and appoint somebody for us. So we have, had to choose by, in the forty-five days, but it depends on what election year and stuff it is too.
Yeah, so the date on that i- is if this were to happen after filing deadline for the twenty twenty-six election process, right, which is in April. If it happens after that, then that person would be appointed and retain the seat until the end of the term, meaning.
Yeah.
No, well, now it's December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, right? But because this is before that filing deadline, this becomes an open seat for election purposes. Essentially for running for it in April when people file, and there will be a trustee then elected versus appointed that gets put in your seat. And I believe the, the law has changed on that now too, right, for townships? The date is effective January first now instead of November twentieth? I'd have to check that.
I gotta look it up.
I think, I think that was one of the changes they did recently. The key for us is that we've been charged now to either appoint somebody or not. And personally, I'd rather appoint someone that I think is going to mesh well with this board and serve the public well.
How do we get those candidates?
Okay, good question. So in the past, and, and other members that are here that have been through this, feel free to jump in. We've essentially made the announcement that the seat is becoming open. That's now been done. And in the past, we've decided to accept applications. I think all three times I've been involved in, we, we took application, no, two of the three times, we took applications from the public and then did an interview process of those individuals if they were wanting to interview. Some just submitted a resume and letter. But we had a process for determining who of the applicants we wanted to appoint and did the appointment. All of that is not prescribed by state law. How we do this is completely up to us. So I'm open to ideas. I have no opposition to how we've done it in the past. I just wanted to open it up for. I think we ought to have a plan in moving forward here tonight, how we want to do this.
I like doing the applicant, or having them fill out the, or submitting the resume. That way you know they're really interested.
And interviews?
It would be similar to what they would do if they were, if it was an election, correct? I don't know, it would be different. I'm sorry, my, yeah, because this would be the third time in seven years, maybe?
Something like that, yeah. The last one being, um, Road Commissioner Houck left because he was elected to another office. Right. But we went for, for the last board, Trustee Houck left for the Road Commission, and then we ended up appointing Trustee Smith through that process I just described, which was an application interview process.
So we have forty-five days from the date of his resign, of his last day.
It was the last day.
So once Jeff. I'll be able to give you that. Once I get the closing date, my last day will be fourteen days from that closing date. I will not have an address here in any county anymore.
But regardless, we could, we could actually post
No.
Literally tomorrow.
Which is why I wanted to have a discussion tonight, because we could essentially begin that process of making it known.
I think phase one is to get the word out there and then.
So we get some applicants.
Right. So any other ideas in process?
Just a question. If, if things happen to go sideways in the path that Trustee Brown's on, even though he's read us a resignation, if he never ends up leaving the township, he's not losing a seat until the point he would no longer have an address in the township. Is that accurate?
Because he's choosing not to, to walk away today.
I'm just saying, yeah.
Yeah, because he has, he has every legal right, as long as he has residence here.
He does not lose a seat until he has no address here.
Yeah, essentially, yes.
Well, he could technically leave today if he wanted.
Yeah, if he wanted.
You know.
That's not, not.
But if something happens and it doesn't sell and he's here for another sixty days.
If whatever changes
Right.
on the path he's on.
Yeah.
And chooses to remain, he has not relinquished his seat.
Correct. Trustee Brown is a trustee right now. And tomorrow.
Well, he's resigned. And you have a letter there right now.
But he is voting, I mean, he's still the trustee.
Yes, you've accepted his resignation. If something were to happen, then I would suggest that Trustee Brown formally inform the board of the withdrawal of his resignation. Something like that.
That's exactly what I would do. If something went, went, went bad and, and, and not foreseeing that at all, but for some reason health or something that had to keep me here, I would rewrite the letter to not resign. And I'd bring it to each one of you at that time. I, I don't see that happening.
I'm just trying to cover a base.
All right, so I'm not hearing new ideas or objections to the process that's kind of been done in the past?
I think that's a, a good plan.
I was one of the ones that went through that process. It worked very well with Trustee Smith. It, it, it actually worked quite well, and we got a great trustee out of it. Trustee Smith was a wonderful trustee.
Yes, he was. So there's.
Looking more of, not so much the resume and the interview process, but the deliberation, or you look, or just from A to Z, are you asking for subject, different suggestions?
Yeah, A to Z, any suggestions that you might want to have, because we have latitude in how we make the appointment. But we as a board make the appointment or we don't. And I would much rather us make the appointment.
So say for instance, no applications. So say for instance, no applications came. Then would it be your responsibility or each of us individually to potentially nominate someone to be considered?
I think any, any one of us could nominate.
I know you have the sole nomination.
For like planning commission, yes. But I'm not aware of that being, I don't know the answer to that. I'm assuming any of us can nominate.
You know, that might, a factor might be if, what if we got fifteen applicants? That might change. I don't, I mean, I think that we should determine what we're gonna do, but that's a little bit different. Could be a little, look a little different than if we had three or four.
I think we should just do it the same way. Like, open it up, we can review them and then interview them the same way as last time. Even if there's like twenty, we should still interview all of them.
I'm not disagreeing with that at all. I'm just saying.
That'd be cool.
You know. I don't, maybe, maybe we're gonna say, if, if we hit twenty, we want to narrow it down to ten. I, I don't, I don't, I'm just talking.
I'm sure.
I don't disagree with what you're saying.
Well, we, we do have a little time. The big, the big issue is getting the accepting your resignation, getting the notice out there. I did ask our manager in the past, do we advertise for this? Because we should have a deadline in which we're accepting applications. Don't know when that's gonna be yet because the timeline's still a little unknown as far as what we have to make as far as timeline. Did you have something to add?
It may, it may be helpful. What I would suggest is that the administration issue a press release or some sort, I'll call it a press release, we write the article for. We have trustee that's announced his resignation. And then let the public know that we are, that the board is accepting applications for replacement appointment. And I would define the application package as you want a cover letter, you want a resume, and you want the application. And we can use the application that exists for any board. And I would require submittal of the cover letter, resume, and application. The cover letter can, you know, they're gonna say why and all that, all that stuff. And you then and I don't know that you want to even set a date. You're gonna accept applications till the process, till the positions filled. But I'd also recommend that you interview these folks. That's up to you, but that's a recommendation. And in the event you have twenty applicants and they've all submitted a valid application package per your definition. That then you all review those. And it's a board meeting, you'll decide who you want to interview. Doesn't have to be all twenty. Those, that's my two cents.
Sounds good.
I hope you get twenty or forty resumes so you guys have a big pool to choose from, really? I mean, the more you get, the better, the qualified person. Just get somebody way better looking than me, let's just say that.
By the way, if you're still sitting on this board because of residency and we do an appointment, you are, you recuse yourself. All right, so, I guess, are you okay putting out a press release?
Yeah, we'll handle all those logistics for you. The only thing I think I'd want to know, because I think it's, you gotta inform these people or something. What do you want them to send you? I'm suggesting that you would receive a cover letter, a resume, and an application. And that becomes the application package that you will review and decide who you're gonna interview. If you don't think a cover letter is necessary or a resume even, we ought, I need to know that now. So I can, in the article.
I think writing a cover letter is one of the hardest things they have to do, and I think it's a really good way to weed people out.
I think a cover letter's the best idea, or like, more than the.
Resume is nice, but.
Technically, the application is all they re, for other positions is all they really need to fill out if they want to add it.
I would like.
I think the more information you give, we could recommend that they do a cover letter and a resume.
We don't need a resume. I just want a cover letter, application.
I'd be good with that.
I would be okay with that.
Resume, I don't need to know your.
Well, for manager's recommendation, cover letter, resume.
Just why you want to run.
This isn't an election. Good, for one. And you can require anything you want or as little as you want.
Those three documents give us a broader sense of who we're talking to.
Well, and to get a seat here, you had to go through the election other than an appointment. So there in that, people knew who you are and what you have done, so there, that's kind of not really a resume, but it kind of is.
Yeah, you have to put in the legwork.
Not just, I want to do this and here's my application, because the application is in China Bay.
Should we require stump speech then, too? I'm kidding. Maybe a lit piece?
Y'all got elected by doing a lot of work at the front end, to make your, get your name out there, get your credentials out there and all that jazz. And I don't know why you would want an appointee, potential appointee to at, at least give you a cover letter, a resume, and the application. The application is what we use for boards and commission appointments. That by itself, I would not recommend you just simply accept.
Well, and a lot of it's said in the resume.
I just want a cover letter.
Yep. I, I think all three. It's not a good thing, but.
Just for historical reference, the first time this happened on a board I was on, no applications were given. It was someone deciding the board. And it was just brought to the board and nominated and voted on.
Does that seem very different?
No, it was odd to me. So the other two processes are like we're describing more and I appreciate those better. I don't, I don't need the resume. Resume is helpful. I'm not gonna grade them on their resume as much as I might why they wanted to serve.
I like to see what people are bringing to the table, too.
It is helpful.
Because it kind of gives them a little bit of a timeline to see what, where their spec, you know, what are they bringing to the conversation?
So any objections to resume? Any objections to the standard application? Any objections to the cover letter?
I, I think we owe it to the citizens to do our due diligence.
Absolutely.
Trying to find someone who's truly interested in this position.
Keep in mind that it's gonna be a temporary spot and you should put that in there. Because there is an election coming up.
Right.
Yeah, that probably should be part of the press release.
And it would go as, as far as, once the applicants have all presented, if one was to be nominated and it was all yeses, that's it. Even if there was another person that maybe might get all yeses. It could just be the, what I'm getting at is it could just be who was faster at the microphone.
Majority rules, right?
Which, I, I, I mean, that is what it is, but.
So the, the other thing for.
You know, what if we had two or three people that got all yeses and we narrowed it down to three? I know we're getting into a.
Yeses to what?
Into a weird situation if we.
I wouldn't say yes to somebody if I didn't feel strongly about them. Like, I wouldn't just go, yeah, whatever. It's fine.
I'm sure that's how it would work out. I'm just, we may get three people that we just, all of us really like, I guess. Let's say I wanted to nominate somebody and I'm the first one to draw, I, you know.
Then you're faster. You got it.
I, I won't foresee a decision being made at this board table. We may, if they come in public or we decide to talk to them in public. But a decision will be made and an, an announcement would be made at, at the board as to.
Yeah, but that's done through a public motion. That's done through a public motion.
You have to do it through public. You can't discuss it behind.
I move to appoint John Doe. That would need to get his support.
Okay, yeah, we gotta be careful of.
Need to get four votes.
Yeah.
And everybody is seeing John Doe's and Mary Jane's application materials. And I would set up a if I was a one-man board. I'd set up an interview process. It's not just credentials, if you will. The, the other part I'm imagining you want to consider in this, how do you know this unless you interact with them a little bit? Are they gonna fit with the board? Is it the type of personality y'all want? Is it the style that y'all want? It's your decision. It's not the citizen's decision at this point. They'll weigh in in November.
They'd have to have three votes because we only have six of us then. We only have six of us then.
Three's not a majority.
I understand that.
Of six.
So it goes three, three, then we have to go again, do we get a four?
You still need a four. You can't have a three, three. Three, three fails.
Yeah, so three's not a majority of the board, four.
You have to have four.
Regardless of whether we're seven or six. The other thing that I think's important maybe for the press release, get your thoughts. Timing of appointment. I think the only thing we know at this point is it will probably be in December or potentially January. Be either our December meeting or our first January meeting, depending on when Trustee Brown actually vacates his residency.
If the earliest Trustee Brown would vacate is the end of the month, so then we would have all December and January. So we could say, we have forty-five days?
Depends on if he were to vacate promises in two weeks, it gets pretty tight on the calendar. I'm not sure we make our January meeting.
So we can just wait two weeks, but we could technically say it could be in first meeting in January.
We may be past the forty-five days is what I'm saying.
So it could be appointment in December.
Or January.
Yeah, I guess that would be because we have a little bit of.
And it really depends on.
To finish up, okay.
Yeah, my address, if I change my address on the twenty-seventh compared to December sixth, that's a whole week difference.
Into that January meeting as an option. I, I think my point being is the press release ought to say something that appointment to this position will be made in December twenty-five or January twenty-six. So at least people have somewhat of a window. What's that?
I think the twenty-fifth would be a great day to come in and do that.
About the year.
Of December.
Yes.
December twenty-five.
No, December twenty-twenty-five, not twenty-five, twenty-five.
What's the last date of December, our last meeting in December?
Eighteenth. Yeah, it's our only meeting. Now, if we need to, we could, we could have a special meeting. We absolutely can do that.
And then depending on the number of applicants, that might be the way to go because then it won't interrupt.
Sure. So I. I, I think, let's, let's assume we have to go to the earlier December. We'd like to see applications by first weekend. That, I have to have a calendar.
We'd have to have applications in like second week of December, wouldn't we?
Yeah, what I would not like to have happen is get applications the day of our board meeting where I don't have a chance to review it. I'd like it at least a few days before so that I can look up this person.
And then January fourteenth is our first meeting, right?
So first week is out in December is three weeks away. That seems like kind of ample time.
The packet gets put together on that Thursday. Is it too much to ask of staff if we set a December eleven deadline?
For applications.
Yeah. That's the Thursday before our eighteenth board meeting. Is that put too much, having to call eight, maybe an app, a couple of applications to come in that day?
Gives you a whole month, right, almost?
Yeah, almost.
Yeah, so that's plenty of time.
Mr. Supervisor, if we don't meet the forty-five days, what happens again as far as you understand?
As far as I understand it, the, the county clerk calls a special election. And that means, I'm assuming not next November, but as soon as they're able to put a special election together, which means additional costs to taxpayers and.
I mean, we might already have one.
What's that?
I mean, wouldn't it be like August, November, like a normal one?
I don't know.
I'm pretty sure it'd be August, November, because we already have it.
Mr. Stuldryer was the.
I have to look it up. That's why I said I wanted to look it up before we talked about it.
Wouldn't there be like a primary and then?
There is a primary and, like, there is August, November this year, because we're doing this, or not this year, next year. Because there's the, what, the state reps and then governor.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think the law is written so that we're gonna leave that seat open till November, though. I think the special election, I think the special election means we're gonna have one as soon as possible.
We'll get it.
But there's rules for that. Like I said, I have to look it up.
And if we have to, you call a special, you have a special meeting, then so be it.
So nobody go anywhere for Christmas?
But there's like rules for it, so it, it's held like you'll have a special election if there's not this or this or like, you know.
Okay, well, let's not cross that.
That's why I said I have to look it up. I couldn't remember.
We're gonna get it done, so don't, you're.
But I'll look it up, all right?
Okay.
Just give me a minute.
Uh, do you feel you have clarity for us regarding press release?
And you said December eleven deadline?
That seemed reasonable to me unless there's objections. It's the Thursday before our eighteenth meeting, which allows hopefully staff time to include applications in the packet. I'm assuming if applications come in prior, maybe we'll have an opportunity to see those. Anything else?
Sorry, guys. I didn't mean to make any extra work for anybody. I promise. I didn't mean to make it hard for anybody, that's for sure. Hopefully, it's an easy process for you.
It will be. It, we know, we've done this, it'll be okay.
I have to admit, it's not a lot of fun, though. We got a great trustee here, so why do we? You guys all work really well together, communicate well together. It'll be, it'll be, it'll be easy for you.
We'll all chip in, get you an apartment in town.
I like, I'm pretty, I'm pretty fancy.
You're fine at all.
You could live in my barn.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm living in a camper right now, so I think anything would be better than that.
You could just park the camper on my property. We hook up one.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Uh, so we, do we have an answer to Trustee Lannon's question regarding the twenty thousand?
Yes, so Trustee Lannon had asked about the private contributions, twenty-twenty-five activity. Um, we received a twenty thousand dollar grant for the, from the Convention and Visitors Bureau for a feasibility study for a baseball multi-field facility complex. So we booked that to the twenty-five revenue receiving of it. And I apologize, it's slipped my mind what that was when you first asked.
Oh, now I'm really glad you asked that. I was glad before, but now I'm really glad. Uh, okay, moving on then. We'll get to item twelve on our agenda, extended public comment, which is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up extended public comment at eight forty-five PM. At the record show, nobody's connected remotely. Again, nobody in person. Raising hands. So we'll close extended public comment at eight forty-five PM. So we'll close extended public comment at eight forty-five PM. Brings us to item thirteen on our agenda, manager comments, Mr. Stuhl dryer.
Thank you. Again, thank to, to the board for your consideration on the twenty twenty-six employment agreement. I also want to let you know that we have started negotiations with both bargaining groups. We've had two bargaining sessions to date. We have a third one scheduled, and we're making good progress. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our manager? Final board member, board member comment, uh, Trustee Brown?
Yeah, alright. Um, just one thing. Mark and Kim, if you could tell the employees out in the field, thank you very much for me. Just, just thank you. Alright. And because I've lived here, too, in their services, everything they've done, but as a trustee, I couldn't be more proud of, of the staff. Thank you, and I really appreciate it. Thank, thank you.
Trustee Lannon?
Yeah, I'd just like to acknowledge Jeff Brown's service to the township. It's very obvious to me that his passion and heart, he gave all he could give for the love of Union Township. If we can find a candidate that, you know, is eighty percent for love for the community, it'd be wonderful, and I've certainly appreciated the time working here at the board and just knowing you over the time you were here at Mount Pleasant, which has been a long time.
Yeah, thanks.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Trustee Lay?
I've got nothing except for, I'm gonna miss you.
I'll miss you too, Trustee Lay.
Treasure Rogers?
Uh, Seth, wish Jeff and his family the best.
Thank you.
Trustee Thering?
Thank you, Trustee Brown, for your service. Appreciate that. Thank you, Manager Stuhl dryer, for accepting the economic part of our contract negotiation, and the consideration of the review of, uh, your contract language. And also thank you to you and your staff for the work that you've done on the budget. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Clerk Cody?
Thank you, Trustee Brown, for your time served, and we're gonna miss you.
Thank you, Clerk Cody.
Ditto. Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. But at least we have, at least one more meeting together.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
So I'll cherish that, then.
Yeah.
Say our goodbyes next time.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
I'm excited for you. We've talked about it, and, uh, the move that Trustee Brown's going through is something that was a long time coming, just maybe ended up coming quicker than you thought.
A little sooner. Thirty years coming, six years, seven years sooner than I thought it was meant to be.
But congrats.
Thank you.
And with that, our business is concluded, and we'll adjourn at eight forty-nine PM.